Okay, so letter E, public participation. Is there anybody on? Martin, raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment.
He's good.
Okay.
Okay. Close it to the public. Letter F. Committee reports. Mr. Zimmerman. Any committee reports this this week? If you don't, we move on.
Last one. Committee met one last day, I think it was. We discussed the lead in the water at some of the schools, but most of them are not being used. So they'll need to be flushed if we ever get back to letting them use the water fountains. We had the upgrade on. Update on the. Windows and that and the. The bridge and all that stuff we went over. There's a bunch of projects brought up. Around the district, including the monies that were used for the fields, you know, that stuff that's completed, stuff that's coming up. The main ones being the windows, the bridge, the switchgear. I think there was one other one. On the musical, the fourth one. Those are on the table right now to be put out to bid, which we agree with. Then we went over to Rowley Hills to look at. Some of the stuff listed in the E I E I architects recommendations, I think there was like 10 of them. Yeah, some of them they didn't school and it was Stumper, Karen. The maintenance guy, George, I believe his name is Darrell. Me, Teresa, Kelly and Joe went around. Basically, two main things that is they have a big storage problem there, so possibly get them a shed. And the rugs on the top of the landings on the first and second floor by the stairs. Are not really in great shape. Some of them are coming up somewhat of a tripping hazard. They complained that they're always wet, so it becomes constant shampooing for. You know, I guess mold or whatever. So we're going to look to see more of a rubber type floor to see if we can put it those two places. And. Next week or next month, we'd like to tour Glen Meadow. Go to Karen, so she'll talk to the principals and go through the list and kind of do the same procedure.
Right. One of the things that came up in a partnership meeting today was water retaining in outside, right outside of Rolling Hills. Called it Lake Rolling Hills. It's a nice thing, like I said, well, Mr. Zimmerman is in favor of.
Hockey lessons.
It's the same spot, but is it on that walkway?
It is.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, he is talking about possibly repaving there, but that project is sort of bigger than. But it certainly we need paving all over the place.
Yeah, the problem.
That water problem has been discussed. Engineering situation.
Build it up. Tilt it to a way where it doesn't.
We actually, it's improved, but it's not acceptable, right? So a couple of years ago, it's been a longstanding problem. Last year, the year before, they actually created another area so the water runs off in another direction to like divert it a little bit. So that helped a little, but the problem is is is.
But that was on the other side of the building, right?
I didn't think so. I thought that was that the part in the back walkway. Is that what you're talking about? It was on the side? Okay, maybe that's that's right. So but.
My theory would be that each school probably has a drainage or a paving issue. We'd have to, I mean, paving is obviously expensive. We maybe get a list from them. See what they are, look at them, my priority. I mean, I know in theory you'd pave a whole school, but it's so expensive. And the last school's five years away, so you know.
Is it just a big low spot or?
Yeah, the problem is like.
Exactly sure where it was.
But it's low and then everything goes up. It's almost like a.
One that we saw was like a little swell, like, you know.
Two of them, but it's because the earth underneath has been undermined to the concrete.
Yeah.
Oh, it's concrete.
And I told them that they're not authorized to have a pool.
Would it solve the problem to put a patch in there and bring it up to level or no?
I think they've tried numerous things.
Think so too.
Unless you fix the bottom, the patches don't work.
I'm just keep.
Not just the water, but then it freezes.
And then over by the plus building at the high school and Glen Meadows parking lot, some of the section.
Glen Meadow when we go there.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we'll put some.
Always throw out schools without the, you know, drainage or paving issues and we can look at them and.
I'm not and I'm not sure what was in EI for drainage, like paving, there was a ton of it, right? I have to go back and look at the assessment for some of these other things that came up today.
Is their long range facilities plan recommend of putting us on a paving schedule and a maintenance schedule? Yeah, so are we going to be able to financially afford to do that? Is that something that we're going to do?
Kind of identify what we need. See how much it's going to cost.
Yeah.
And figure it out.
When we reviewed our items at finance the other night. It's kind of a toss up on, do we want to do this or do we want to do this, right? Do we want to do intercoms and like communications throughout the district or do we want to do paving? They're both really big ticket items. But but all of these things are necessary, so.
Some of the numbers that we had in finance were very questionable, so we're going to be a little bit more. Chopping our pencils.
Paving end of it could be a liability at some point in time.
Yeah.
Even disrepair. Somebody gets hurt, busts an ankle, loses their car tire, whatever. You got to be careful on that.
Yeah, and then you were speaking of the water. You know, we in partnership today, we talked about having more water filling stations added to the schools.
Well, we brought that up before. I mean, Carol's thing is. They stick out into the hallway, some of them. You know, some are in alcoves, some are flat. If you put them all out, kids run by, you know.
There's none upstairs and I didn't realize that.
So we could look into, but those are the issues he brought up, mostly that.
Yeah.
Quite expensive because you have to cut in a space to stick it in.
Yeah.
Everything's made out of block.
But yeah, but you should have water.
Yeah, so maybe for our next tour and everything, we should just take a look at those waterfall stations. Yeah, and because there's like water coolers that are.
Money to pay for it, the kitchen money, it's.
It is.
I don't know if it would fall.
Sure would.
I don't know if it would.
I don't think so. Yeah, it's not the cafeteria.
But regardless, we should, you know, I think that it's an important item and we definitely should add that to the list of.
Now, if you if you built the food services kiosks and they happen to have that.
Next to the kiosk.
As if it was part of the kiosk and maybe argue that. Where you put them all in the. But I don't think that.
Is that something that came?
No, but the thing is, they they were saying that there were none on the upper floors.
So the kids, if they're upstairs, they have to come all the way down upstairs.
Who's this?
The highest school.
And that's that's.
I don't know about Lounges.
I just, I guess I have a question. We, I mean, we had a partnership meeting earlier, right? So, I mean, I can take the, I guess, the notes or what I recall from partnership and spread them amongst. Oh, that's right, because you're the chair. Okay, good. Thank you.
Get on that.
Bring up some of the points.
Right.
Because it's the buildings and grounds.
Yeah, Ray didn't know until he got here.
I know that.
Yeah, no, no.
It's an open discussion.
Because guess why? This is work session. This is good.
All right.
So so thanks, Ray. You're doing a great job on buildings and grounds.
Thank you very much.
Be proactive and I love that. Thank you.
Okay, so that's.
Curriculum.
So we did have a curriculum meeting. I didn't bring my minutes. I printed them out and they're upstairs in my house, but I. Now, we talked about New Jersey CUSAC and the county visit was pushed back the way they had requested. I think it was May eighth and ninth. It might be May seventh and eighth. I'm not absolutely sure right now. Then we talked about the program participation rate and what was being done about that. That's like some of the courses were under participated. So they were doing an elective fair at the high school and that was really well received apparently.
I was there today. It was excellent.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah. So they had the juniors yesterday, I think, and the sophomores today. And they go around, they learn about the courses that are available to them and kind of get a little sales pitch, I think. And then the high high school guidance counselors visited the eighth graders to help kind of talk them through their path in high school. And that's a new thing, so that I think that's really exciting. Apparently that was a huge hit. Kids are really, really excited. So then we talked about midterms, like the postscript to them. I'm not going to get into that because that's on the agenda a little bit later. They did say, though, that the failure rate was roughly equivalent to what it had been the last time we held them, which was pre COVID. So that was kind of, I guess, good news. And it was four hundred of. Four hundred of six thousand one hundred versus three hundred ninety of six thousand. Now, person can do the percentage there, but did sound about right. I'm sorry, I didn't. I didn't calculate it. I meant to. Then the CT internship program, we got a little update on that. Apparently the business sides are they're good to go. The construction people are really gung ho. The mountain creek is really gung ho. So what's left is to kind of gauge the interest of the students. And then to handle some hurdles and some of the hurdles are transportation to get the kids to these jobs if they don't have, you know, licenses yet and whatnot. Or cars. And oh, and another big hurdle is that the sites of the jobs have to be inspected once a week. So one of the things we're thinking about doing is doing the internships, bringing them to the schools, because then we wouldn't need to do that. Because we don't have somebody apparently to do that yet. Or we get somebody. So then what else? Oh, and then college, we were talking about kind of getting college. Planning going a little bit earlier. So one of the things they're doing there is they're bringing the noviance program to the middle school. So that's something we've only had at high school previously, and that's like that's. Program where you can look at colleges, what they're looking for in different students, what they have to offer. There's also assessment tools there that kids can kind of take quizzes to figure out what they might, what their interests might pair them with in terms of a career. And going forward, we're going to discuss strategies to help families navigate the college application process.
Great. Thank you so much, Jen. You're just, your your notes are so, I don't know how you run your meeting and do all your. That's amazing. So that's great. Thank you. Justin, finance.
Okay, so the finance committee met on this Tuesday, February eighth. We had full attendance, so it was Mr. Zimmerman, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Sweeney, Ms. DeVino, Ms. Joseph and myself. We had four discussion items during the meeting. The first was a status update on the 2021 2022 budget. That's this current year's budget. Again, Ms. Joseph reiterated what she shared last month as she sees no major, no red flags, nothing that is catching her. Showing any warning signs. She did mention that $250,000 was transferred between the health benefits and the maintenance account. In order to take care of some maintenance items that have come up in the district. Even with that, she is estimating that there will be probably excess of $500,000 in positive variance in the health benefits account this year. When it is all said and done, a significant part of that is because of the February premium holiday. So just to remind everyone, we pay our health premiums on a monthly basis and the state health benefits plan said for the month of February, you are not. Paying premium into the plan. So that is going to cause a positive variance in the count that will roll over into fund balance at the end of the year. And then get carried over to 23 24's budget. We did begin discussion discussion about the 2022 2023 budget. We looked at the multi-year revenue projections, which the whole board now has copies of. And looked at what the 22 23 revenues will likely look at, look like and what the 23 24 revenues will look like. Because really to plan, what we need to do is, right now, we're working on building a budget for next year, but we need to plan for the following year. Because the budgets are so interconnected from year to year. And without long term planning, we will not manage to our best advantage. The the state funding cuts that we are going to see in the next few years. We have two more years of state funding cuts. We're looking at two and a half million dollars in funding cuts this this upcoming year and just over a million. I'm sorry, did I get those numbers right? It was.
Have two and then a half a million.
2.3 million and then 1.4 million are the next two years of state funding cuts. But after that, we have successfully managed. The six years of funding cuts that we've been talking about for a very long time now.
And there'll be no more cuts.
Hopefully things will stabilize, at the very least, or plateau. So that was the discussion about the budget. Then we began to talk, we had a very brief discussion about a our copy releases, which seems like a really small item, but we actually. Our copy releases for the district in total across the entire district, all of our buildings is about $80,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a little bit more than that.
A little bit more than that.
That that was what was budgeted in that account.
Right, and what Ms. Joseph identified is that we were budgeting our copy releases under our administrative code. Under our administrative lines within our budget as opposed to properly allocating them between each of our buildings. And what that does is that actually drives up our administrative cost per pupil calculation. And we really should be spreading out that cost between each of our buildings in order to properly account for those costs. And to not artificially inflate our administrative cost per pupil. So Ms. Joseph did correct that. And at the same time, she renegotiated our upcoming leases. To five year leases that are going to save us approximately $20,000 per year over the next five years. So it was something that she found that was slightly amiss, but she turned it into an opportunity. And then we got an update on the capital projects that are currently on being undergone in the district. And more from a financial aspect, she, it was really just a report out on what the Buildings and Grounds Committee has been looking at. A lot of the numbers are very preliminary for the things that were in the long range facilities plan. But we're going to continue to monitor those from the financial committee, from the finance committee, from the financial side of things. Obviously, we're not going to vet the actual projects because that's more under the 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 Buildings and Grounds Committee. But that was a finance committee meeting. It was very productive. Everybody was there early because it's a great group of hardworking board members.
Absolutely, yes.
It was a good meeting.
Justin, all of the projects that we're going through now, they've all been approved by the board.
All the current projects.
Yes, yes.
Yes, so the current projects that were approved that we talked about were the track and the track turf and the field.
Which has been done.
Yes, the high school building upgrades, the the high school electrical upgrades and the chiller unit at Lowndesbury Hollow.
Right.
And then we had discussion about some of the longer range projects, such as the window replacements and the tennis court and the bridge repair at Glen Meadow, the things that were in the long range facilities plan.
So we approved the architectural. Work on those, right?
Well, they're in different phases.
Yeah, they're they're in different phases.
Yeah.
So most of, most of them are in the architectural phase.
Yeah.
So the numbers are still estimates at this point.
He's pretty close to what they really should be. And Justin, thank you so much for organizing our training tonight on finance, our two hour training.
Kelly, you're so welcome.
It was very enjoyable and it was really super helpful. It really was. It went very quickly. You thought that it would be like, okay, you know, a lot of numbers and it was just really interesting and we had. Some really good questions from from the group, so thank you for organizing that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes, we had a good meeting on Monday. My apologies for such short notice on the meeting to the other people in the committee there. In attendance was Kelly, myself. Pat Rizzuto from the council, council president and Natalie, who was, she's council vice president, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
And the liaison chair for us.
Right, and Karen was there also. And I have to say, the one great thing that came out of this meeting is they are engaged. They are, this new regime is really engaged, really want to work together with the board to try and save each other some money, do some things together, have a have a. A combined presence in the town, which was really nice. We talked about things like the dog park. Also shared services, which is stuff that we brought up before to other regimes and, you know, it really didn't. Go as far as we would have liked it to. I I'm going to be working together with some individuals and putting together some semantics on the dog park for them. They are receptive to discussing it, which is nice. So I have to see what it's going to take to actually do that if we decide to do it. I have to go particulars together with the town and subdividing out the. Solar panels and any easement we need to get on there and things like that. So there's there's some work to be done, but they're willing to talk, so makes a big deal out of it.
Big improvement, Martin.
It's it's nice. It's nice. And we talked a lot about the shared services. And so one of the action items that we walked away with for both parties for the next meeting is to come with what those shared services could possibly be. You know, and how we might be able to work together and what buckets they're going, you know, the money's going to come out of and when it's going to come and, you know, there's, again, there's a lot of semantics to work through, but again, it's nice to be talking about it.
Yeah.
There were a couple of other things we talked about too, but those are on the back burner for now. And as suggested by the council president, we might come to the board and see if we can possibly have a. A meeting or a meeting with everybody, the school board and the town council in one meeting. Don't know what that looks like, don't know how it's going to work, but might be something to do once a year.
Was that something that they wanted to do in advance of the budget?
They more so wanted to do it on a slower time of year. And that was actually suggested by them, which I thought was very nice.
Yeah, I love that idea.
It was really nice.
Idea.
But, you know, they're very realistic and everything we talked about was very positive. All right, and and that was it. Did I forget anything? I don't think I did.
So I have I have an idea for a shared, I don't know, it's probably wacky, but shared services, since I'm not on liaison anymore, I'll tell you now. We're really good at grant writing, right, like here? So maybe we can help them because there have to be grants for some of the projects that they're working on.
Sure.
Right, so I don't know, is it possible? I don't I don't even know who does our grant writing. Is someone going to kill me later?
This turning into, I envisioned this turning into shared services and some one hand watches the other type of thing. The reason why I asked the question about whether or not that thing in the parking lot was a divot or what have you that they could possibly fill. Is possibly the liaison committee can go to the council and say, hey, guys, can you have a W run over there and drop some tar in there next time they're on the road? Things like that, little things like that, I think, make a big difference.
Yeah.
You know, so we'll we'll see how it all works out.
So Martin, I really appreciate your quick turnaround on that meeting because we talked about very sensitive, time sensitive. Subject matter and Karen is going to read a prepared statement on on that subject.
Oh, good. I didn't want to mention.
Might as well.
Yeah, you know what? Thanks for bringing it up and I I actually, I didn't really know too much about it until I got there, but. You know, it seems there may be some misinformation in the community that I wanted to clarify. For the folks that are watching the board meeting, and I know some people watch it live and some people watch it, you know, later. We were informed and I was informed that at liaison. That Shrine Group Incorporated has committed to make a monetary donation to the Vernon Township School District. The Shrine Group provides licenses for cannabis retail. And are working toward cannabis retail businesses in various municipalities in New Jersey. I just want to state for the record that the Vernon Township School District is not and will not be partnering. With Shrine Group or any other cannabis retail businesses. As a school district, we currently provide through a longstanding partnership with the Vernon Coalition, a variety of substance use, substance use and awareness programs. In addition, our skilled faculty provide instruction regarding healthy habits, wellness, physical fitness, and we also cover the dangers of substance use in our approved curriculum. Keeping our students and your children healthy and safe is one of the most important responsibilities of the school district. Let me take that responsibility seriously. So if you're hearing these things or seeing these things posted on social media, please disregard those statements or posts. They have no merit. It is not anything we're entertaining at this time. Thank you.
So anybody have any questions on that statement?
Thank you.
No? Negotiations, I am the chair of, however, we are not at that point yet, but soon. Partnership, Mr. Sweeney.
Okay, partnership met today. I'm going to give. I guess a report on all of the items that we discussed. There were 20 items on the on the agenda. So that will come next week. But we talked about a lot of things with the association and the administrative association. That's the whole group. And it's a nice group. There was an open communication. We had a lot of discussion about a lot of things. I mentioned some of the things that to Ray about the buildings and grounds. But I will give a written report within the next couple of days.
Thank you, Joe.
Did you want to add anything? I mean, you were there. You were wonderful, Kelly.
I thought it was a good meeting, but articulate.
I was quiet today, that's why.
But nice representation, right?
I don't know. It was a good meeting, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, it was a great meeting and. And it was very well attended, so that was great.
We'll be meeting again in two months.
Right, and you baked for the event.
And there are some leftovers.
I think that's why we had such high attendance, possibly.
Well.
They will come.
Right. There you go. Mrs. Coghlan, special services.
For special services, I will give my report next week at the public meeting.
Okay, great.
Next week.
Okay, good. So student life, we met yesterday and we're very excited that student student life is going to work on art standing this year. Super excited about that. We went through some thought processes on what that's going to look like, a little, a couple of surprise additions. We decided to incorporate a fantastic idea from Mr. O'Donnell. That we're going to do a contest Vernon Scott Talent. Very excited about that and details will come. Of course, Mrs. Coghlan will be the one to put out the poster for that because she is our graphics designer.
I have to say, it's big and quite the entertaining thing. I've been learning as I go, but you know.
Yes.
And it's been a good ride.
So we'll get a lot more details on that, but we spent a good hour and a half talking about the logistics of that. With Vinnie and Karen and Tara Brennan, Jen, myself, Martin and Teresa were all there and. It's it's just going to be a great event and I'm excited that we're doing that this year and. And we'll get those details out to the public, so super excited for student life. And then we talked about our senior signs again. We're going to do that project again in Main Street and that's up and coming. So exciting stuff for student life this year. Adina, did you do your ad hoc this?
We did not have a meeting. We have a meeting planned for March third. Plan is to have administration kind of inform those of us that are on the committee, the information that they have gathered in the past. And then we'll build a roadmap of where we want to go from there.
Fantastic. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that concludes committee reports. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll go on to item G, discussion topics. I, you know, we've, we've said that we want to go back to the culture of work session being work. So I asked everybody if they could weigh in on some discussion items that they would like to talk about. Because I really believe that work session should be about work and coming together with ideas and thoughts and. And working instead of just two basic public meetings all the time. So this is what we're going to be doing on work session. We're going to have our topics. We're going to work things out and and talk about, you know, current events, things like that that are going on in the district. Trying to make things better. So I assigned everybody a lead speaker to the topics, but I did, because of the current event of the lifting of the mask mandate. I did ask Karen to please discuss that during our topics and I'm going to have her speak first if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'll try to be, oh, I'm so sorry.
And your time's up.
I'll try to be brief. We did talk about it at partnership a little bit. It was. I'll try to be brief. We did talk about it, um, at partnership a little bit. It was really important to get some feedback from the faculty, so I appreciate that. As I think everybody knows at this point, on March seventh, um, Governor Murphy's um, masking executive order will be removed and school districts now have the option um, to have students and faculty wear masks or not wear masks. Um, in his um, press conference the other day, he really emphasized um, uh, an anti-bullying or no bill, no bullying stance um, that I uh, welcome and support. My recommendation to the board for March seventh and to our community would be that we make masks optional. Um, Governor Murphy did indicate that there are no mask bans um, permitted, uh, so we would not be banning masks, but I think it's really important and I apologize for the partnership folks, because I said this earlier, but I think it's really important that if um, we have to be respectful about people's choice, right? Children can choose to wear masks because there are immune compromised um, people in their family. There may be elderly people at home that they don't want to expose to an illness. Um, people may be cautious about um, spreading or receiving germs, COVID or otherwise. People may be vaccinated or unvaccinated. Um, so one of the things um, after we have our discussion and I, I put out communication to the community, hopefully tomorrow, is that um, it's, it's an opportunity for us to be respectful of everybody's personal choice, right? I mean, we're finally to the point where uh, masks will be able to come off on March seventh, um, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to exercise caution, but also exercise respect with one another. The unfortunate caveat or fortunate is that there is still a federal mask mandate for transportation. Um, and our drivers fall under Department of Transportation regulations. So that means that students will still have to wear masks on buses, but they thankfully will be able to remove them in school, should they choose, right? It's optional. Um, the other thing that I am uh, concerned about is that we have not yet received guidance from the Department of Health. They can provide um, anything from a change to quarantine or exclusion or isolation to any other health-related measures. We have been following the Department of Health guidance from the very beginning of uh, the pandemic. Um, the one thing I am worried about is that right now, when somebody is out, whether they are a um, close contact of someone or they have had COVID and they're out for a five-day quarantine, when they return, they have to wear a mask for days six or ten. And that's not obvious right now because we all have masks on, right? So on March seventh, if you return from a quarantine and the uh, Department of Health says you need to wear a mask from day six or ten, that child is now identifiable to everybody else and uh, myself and other superintendent colleagues have a real problem with that. We really don't feel there should be identifiable uh, uh, things surrounding COVID. We're not comfortable with segregating children based on anything like vaccinated or unvaccinated. It's not a good practice. So we have pushed back to the Department of Health asking for some um, guidance. I don't know when we will receive it. So those are the things that I'm worried about. Um, we did talk a little bit today at um, partnership about uh, Zoom access. At this time, I, I'd, I'd rather just hold on and see how we do in the next few weeks. I know that it's a challenge for our teachers, but I know our families really need it sometimes when the children are out. If the Department of Health reduces their uh, quarantine to one or two days, then maybe we don't necessarily need to keep the Zoom access, but for five days when a child is missing a full week of instruction, that's a lot of time. So um, so I think we have to take a balanced approach with this. And um, we do have a few weeks luckily, uh, you know, March seventh, um, you know, is coming up. Uh, we are in yellow today. The whole uh, northern part of the state is yellow, which is great news. The southern part is still orange, but you know, we're finally starting to move, I think into um, hopefully a safer time. I know people are still really anxious, so. Um, that's kind of where we are, but I, I need feedback from the board on any um, other uh, items that you think should be included in correspondence to the community. Other um, things that, that I haven't considered, uh, you know, that people might be um, worried about.
Any comments?
I just have a quick question, because I don't know the answer. Um, on the buses, do we have masks for kids who don't have? Because if a kid comes in in the morning with a mask on a bus, takes it off, they're gonna lose it. There's gonna be a little bit more of that, so I just wanted to make sure we had.
Yeah, I mean, the paper masks that I, I mean, we have them um, at the front of the um, when you walked in here, we have them on the buses. You know, so um, you know, it's um, yeah, we do have them. I mean, I know sometimes when kids walk up to the bus, if they don't have the mask, they put it on. Um, but now at least they won't have to wear them during school, so.
And there's, there's still some time there for uh, the federal uh, mandate.
That's true. So we may be able to do no masks on buses as well, so, which would be great.
I believe your approach is a correct approach. From the beginning, we have um, taken the position that we are not public health experts and we have followed the Department of Health guidelines for two years, whether we've agreed with it is and individuals are not. So if masks are gonna be optional March seventh, then masks should be optional in the district March seventh. Of course, there's still rules like the, like the transportation rules that we'll have to follow, but I think that you know, two years into this is not the time to change our course of following the Department of Health, so I, I agree with your approach.
And thanks. I will say that now that we're in yellow, I feel much more comfortable, I'm sure, um, about some of the removal. I would be very interested in hearing when you speak with the Department of Health about our preschoolers who most likely will not be eligible for a vaccine um, until the end of the month, and that's every family's choice. But you know, as a family that does choose to do that, if I had a preschooler, I, I would be concerned. You know, to at least hold off a few weeks um, to letting the preschoolers that can, I know we have some preschoolers that can't mask, to at least hold off till, you know, five weeks after whenever they say, oh yeah, children two to five can get the vaccine, wait the five weeks, give families that option and then remove it for them. But I, I would be interested to hear the feedback from the Department of Health on that.
Yeah, I'll inquire when uh, I'll, I'll ask about preschool as well.
Anybody else?
I just want to add that I agree with you about the um, Zoom instruction. It's, we just need to give these kids some, something when they're out. It's it's unfortunate, but yeah.
I mean.
It's a, it's a big burden on.
I know, I know, and I.
They have responded tremendously.
I know, I feel, you know, I mean, it's terrible, it's terrible, but you know.
Terrible either way.
Be taught somehow and they're stuck at home, so.
And I'm hope, I guess I'm hoping that, you know, with all of these, remember the Department of Health talks about layered strategies, right? Like we still have to wash our hands. We should still remain physically distant. We should still, you know, um, we should not be in crowded spaces, right? Like the, if whatever's out there is transmissible, whether it's the flu or COVID or whatever, right? So I, I think I'm hoping that we're slowly starting to return to uh, you know, some normalcy. These are really, really good signs, right? So um, and I, I hate to feel like just a little bit longer because I feel the stress just like everybody else. I mean, it'll be, it'll be two years next month. You know, it's, it's a lot, you know, so um, but having the masks optional in schools i- is great. I mean, children will be able to see their faces, teachers will be able to teach well, um, you know, so that's um, that's a real bonus, I think, on March seven.
I mean, to get our kids back to normal again, I, I'm so grateful for that, so.
Yeah, me too.
I can't wait for March seventh.
Well, you, you're addressing the important things that there's no discrimination. People want to wear masks that they shouldn't be allowed to without any issues.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually part of the anti-bullying Bill of Rights. Any physically distinguishing characteristic could be considered bullying, right? So you know, I mean, that's not appropriate. We have to be respectful of each other and it's, it's an opportunity to come together as we get through this, so. But I'll put together some um, a letter, you know, that will go out.
Yes, thank you.
Um, but I just wanted the board the opportunity, of course, to weigh in on everything first, so.
Do we have, I mean, as time goes by, will we stop the contact tracing and things like that?
You know, um, right now the schools are doing all the contact tracing. Um, we reported to the Department of Health. They really are working so hard. We're not hearing about um, letting up on the gas at all about that. I was on a um, I'm on a long-term advisory committee meeting with the Department of Education and uh, the Department of, the assistant commissioner was on the other day and we conveyed to him that um, the, the, it's such a heavy lift for us. The contact tracing is, is just so burdensome to our nurses and to everybody else who's doing it. We're not hearing about that letting up at this time. You know, but the, the pandemic has had just so many other impacts, right? And, and that's on the agenda for this evening, but it's definitely something that we hope will end at some point, you know, but we're not hearing any of that yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Kraus, uh, you had a discussion item about RPOs and their roles with our students.
Yes, uh, during the last work session, it seemed a question came up about the RPOs and, and how they're interacting with students when it came to something legal. There was a little argument back and forth, so I just looked into it and I came up with some questions that I'd like to ask to figure out what's going on in their roles, alright, so. What was their original job description? Do we have a job description on them? Because all I see is a policy and the policy really doesn't describe what their role specifically is.
Yeah, I, I could have, I, I can provide that for the board. I'm pretty sure we have job descriptions for just about everybody in the district, so. Yeah, I can provide those for you. I didn't provide them. I didn't know what the nature of the discussion was, but I can.
Find out what their roles have. They work with the kids. So then, then what's their role now and how could they be utilized in the schools?
Um, I think it depends on the um, RPO. It depends on the level of the um, building. Uh, it depends on, it depends on what they're needed for. I think it's really circumstantial at this point. I mean, one of the things that um, you know, I did talk to our director of security and one of the things that he assured me is that what we don't do is that there's no um, I don't know how to say this, right? Because in the movies you kind of picture like a security guard like marching someone towards somewhere, right? And um, I think they would call it like a purple walk, right? But that, that never, ever, ever happens in our schools. Do our RPOs sometimes escort children from place to place? I think they probably do. I don't know if that's in the job description.
It's what I'd like to know, yeah.
Okay.
I had an opportunity to speak to one of the RPOs and he told me that he, his job is to keep the ki- keep the kid, the children safe from outside. He, his job is not to deal with any disciplinary issues in school or anything like that. His, he monitors the mod, you know, the security cameras and checks all locks and things like that, so that's.
Yeah, they do have um.
His response.
Yeah, they all have perimeter checks. I mean, they're all required to check doors and as far as, I guess I thought the question was more about interaction with students.
It is.
Oh, okay. I don't know.
Well, if a kid that we dis- uh, we discuss, uh, we discover some kid maybe has drugs or something, we don't know. So we want to go check him. You take him into the principal's office. Are they in there to search a kid?
No, no, they are not permitted to search children.
Yeah, because they don't have any police powers at all.
And, and they shouldn't even be in the principal's office at all for that.
No, in fact, I just went over um, drug searches with the administrative team in our last administrative meeting, which was a week or so ago, so there are no RPOs permitted when there's searches for drugs, weapons, God forbid, anything like that. It has to be. The difference between um, police level and, and administrative level is a little bit different. You know, you hear um, you know, they need probable cause, we need reasonable suspicion. It's a bit different, so you know, the fortunately or unfortunately administrators have a little bit more purview on if they needed to search a child for a weapon or for drugs or an illegal substance.
So administrator can do that.
Yes.
Then when does the SRO get involved with this?
The SRO does not get involved in it unless um, uh, if it's a violation that needs to be reported to the police. Um, usually the administrator would, the administrator has to complete the search or complete the whole investigation, right? That includes notifying me, notifying the parent, administering consequences, whatever, all of those things go. If it's police level, they would actually call um, our SRO, who's um, Officer Perry.
Yeah, Detective Perry, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's one other thing I have. Are they assigned specifically to one building or do they rotate through the buildings?
For the most part, they're assigned to one building and that really is for security purposes. So they get familiar with the faculty, they get familiar with doors, they get familiar with you know, habits of cars coming in and out of driveways and parking.
The reason I bring that up because in our policy, it says that they have to work on a rotational basis at all the schools to ensure familiarity with all the district facilities.
Okay.
The original intent of the RPO position was a response by the board to the the epidemic of gun violence that we have in our nation and protect.
Right, right.
External threats like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mentioned. And you know, I, I, I think the concern, some of the concern that's, that, that I have as a board member is that you know, is the original intent, the usage that the position is, you know, is, is filling now.
Right.
You know, are the, are the RPOs being utilized as a, as a campus monitor for the purposes of escorting students at times, you know, from class to the main office, things like that? Or is it really?
Right.
You know, strictly making sure that our buildings are, are secure from external um, threats.
So um, since this all took place before I was here, I guess my question is if the board um, in reviewing the policy and of course the job descriptions, my apologies, John, so I'll make sure that you have those. If you all read those and feel that those are accurate and they are exactly what you want, then I can make sure that we follow those exactly the same way. But if you say we don't, this is not what we want, then let's amend them and I'll change, I'll do whatever the vision is of the board or the expectation.
So what do you think best practice is? Is best practice to rotate throughout the building?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say. Well, maybe the, our head of security should weigh in.
I mean, with all due respect, Justin and I were on the board when this came up.
Right.
So unless there's been some seismic shift of security between when they were put in place and now, we really should be following the original thoughts of the board previously when they were put in place. And that was to have them rotated specifically so they were not involved with students. There was no, oh, I know Johnny handled discipline. Oh, I'll escort this student down. It was actually, they were supposed to be rotated and that's why I was putting the policy was because we wanted them to be utilized at every single school and even use them for if there was an activity. So let's say there was a, a music concert in the evening that it would be able to be put out, who would like to cover this? And then all the RPOs would know that school. So they would constantly be able to rotate and know what happens at the high school, what happens at Glen Meadow, what happens at every single school, know all the teachers. And um, not to interact with the students. That was one of the biggest concerns that if they do stay in one school, then what'll happen is they almost become ingrained and then it's like, oh, can you come over here? And before you know it, they're getting involved with the students. And the board was um, very particular that they did not want any sort of, I'm just gonna use the term armed guard involved with students. So the rotation was recommended to us to keep them all apprised of what happens in every single school. So being aware, oh, on Wednesdays, this bus comes to this school. That way they all know. If someone was absent, they could all fill in for each other. And then that way they would all have experience working with everyone from our littlest, our pre Ks all the way from three twelve and experience all the way throughout because as it was explained to us in the beginning, they're not educationally certified and they're now retired police officers, so it was a very gray zone that they're not supposed to be acting with any educational aspect.
Yeah.
But yeah, the rotation was actually a big component of that.
I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
I never finish.
I, I have to disagree with that, wholeheartedly, and the reason being.
With the, with the five.
Rotation, because these individuals were brought in for safety, safety from the outside, active shooter, bombs, crazy stuff like that, sorry. And, and. And these individuals should know every nook and cranny of that school.
Okay.
Their major job is the safety of those children, okay? So if you have an active shooter or something along those lines, they gotta be able to know where kids could possibly be, where this, where the active shooter can possibly be. That person should know that building like the, but better than their own home. Okay, and if they're rotating school to school, I don't know that that's gonna be the case.
Okay.
So that's, if that, that's where my disagreement comes in on that.
I just wanna, I want to give direction uh, to the administration, you know, how we feel about this policy, because, because we can amend any policy.
Yeah, so I think that we should look at the policy and say, you know, is this in line with that? And, and if that were the case, if what Martin is saying, you know, is the direction the board wants to go in, then we would have to change the policy, because that's not what it currently says.
Yeah.
Right. And so then are we going against policy? Like, that's the other concern.
If we're not rotating them as of right now, then.
Well, they are assigned, but they are also rotated, so um, they don't rotate daily and I'm looking for the portion that talks up.
Does not.
I was at the high school before and our Rolling Hills person was there, right? You know, working in event. When we are here at this meeting, we have our uh, gentleman who is generally assigned to Lounsbury, but we have had other folks um, at Lounsbury Hollow School, so um, uh, I didn't know what the nature of the discussion was. I mean, this is all, um, you know, I.
Fine, it can continue into March as well. I mean, that's fine.
I mean, I, whatever, I wanna, I wanna meet the desires of the board, right? Because, and the expectation of the community, because I know this was a very. Because, and the expectation of the community, because I know this was a very significant topic when it occurred, right? So like Teresa said, if this is still the same um, feelings, right, which I, I would assume it is, you know, then we just have to make sure that this is what we want and we just make sure that it's followed. So.
Well, I think we're a little divided on.
Yeah, may not be the same.
The, the rotating or not. Um, I personally would like to hear from somebody that's experienced in security.
Me too.
I agree.
I don't think I can make that call. No, and that's what happened last time. We heard, you know, all the experts talked about it. Like, we didn't just say, oh, let's rotate them. Like, we weren't negligent in any manner. This was a very detailed topic. We went over it numerous times. Um, we had, you know.
The chief of police attended the.
Came and explained to us.
And there were a number of town halls because it was, it was following very tragic events.
So we didn't just make this up. Like, there was like very specific reasons why this was done. Um, so from that perspective.
Some folks that, I mean, I'm not a security expert. I have to be honest. Like, I'd, I'd be lying if I said.
That I knew.
Right? And it wouldn't be fair because I'd be making statements that might not be accurate. So.
Yeah, I think we have different board members now and also several years of, of this behind us. Um, so it would be good to hear from our head of security.
I'd like to get an update. It's always good to have.
Right? I mean, there might be things that we've improved upon. I mean, look, in fact, I mean, I know we have um, updated cameras. We have, we have certain, you know, there are other things that we've done, right, that, that have improved to current. We've talked about some of those things privately, right? Um, you know, so um, but you know, I mean, however you want to proceed.
Can I suggest that you um, consider part of that conversation may need to be a closed session conversation?
Yes.
Because I don't want us to discuss in detail security protocols in public.
That's true. And then another component when we had the RPOs is that the board was told repeatedly that they would not be part of the union. And one of the reasons that they rotated through was so that way with their hours, that's why um, if someone wanted to take on an event in the evening, you wouldn't be overlapping with hours and hours would be available. And then there was uh, some sort of misstep along the way uh, with the naming and how um, going from monitors to RPOs and then they are now in the union. So there's, has definitely been shifts over time and things that the board was told at the beginning, you know, have changed. So looking into this is definitely a good idea because you're right, there are new members and there were things that we were told as a board when we voted and we were assured would not happen. And now here we are a few years later wondering, you know, what happened. And, you know, Karen, I understand you are new and I understand there's always a change, but our assistant superintendent has been here all the way through.
Yeah.
So um, you know, that's to be noted as well too. But yeah, I'm looking forward. We could discuss that further.
Sure. So we'll put that on the agenda for closed session. I, I agree with Justin, closed session. For next month.
For next month.
Oh, sorry, February seventeenth.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll do that February seventeenth and if, if they're available. Who would you like to hear from?
I guess Scott.
Okay. Anybody else?
Probably should have, I think that's police, right? We had the chief of police the last time. I mean, if he's available, you could.
I'll call Dan and ask him. Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you, John, for uh, for chatting on that. But you know, I think that uh, every once in a while we need to like brush through those policies and that's what a great thing about work session is, is that we get to look through those policies and we can always update them.
Yeah, if we can improve our practices. I mean, that's, especially security, that's the most important thing, you know, right?
So thank you. Ms. Pellet.
Oh, so that's me.
Communication with parents regarding navigating Burn Township High School.
Yeah, so I, I've put this down because um, I think the high school in the district do a really great job pushing out a lot of information and there's a lot to push out, like events that come up along the way and um, just, you know, the COVID cases, things like that. But there are a lot of things that um, exist all the time that we, I think, have a, we think, we maybe think people know about. And um, so, so when you have a kid who's going into the high school, you get a packet like in eighth grade with all the concord courses and the things that we talk about at the board level, right? The, the CTE programs and all of that. But as you go through the high school, there's no like re-upping of that information, I don't think, to parents. And I just felt that as a district, you know, if we could communicate some of the things that we're already doing and offering to, to parents more and kind of build awareness of it, you know, we have a lot to offer. We're offering a lot and we maybe can't add to what we're offering very easily, but we can get more people accessing what we're offering. Um, so I just, I just wanted to bring that to the full board. We're talking about it in curriculum committee. You know, a little bit about how to, how to, and, and then that in turn would hopefully engage parents more, which feeds, you know, student achievement. Because, you know, the number one, well, one of the directly correlating things to improving student achievement is parent engagement. So I love.
That would be just in, you know, making our website more accessible. It would be actually sending out, you know, stuff.
Yeah, and maybe in different formats. Like Kelly's often pointing out that, you know, we send a lot of things out by email and we don't want to hammer people with maybe text, but maybe we use social media. We, like, we need to reach people where they are and some, some of our students, uh, families don't, don't, maybe they're not email people. Maybe they're, you know, text people.
Or our social media.
Like me, when you get a piece of mail from the district, like that mail is open. Before I'm even in the house. I'm like, oh my God, a letter from the district and I rip it open. So, you know.
You know, the last one, right? We were hearing all about the CTE programs and I remember going to the high school for those tours and I thought to myself, you know, you don't go back to that tour again, but my cousins are now taking new, you know, courses. And so it's just like to kind of re-up to parents each year, like, hey, your kids are sophomores now, your kids are juniors now, your kids are seniors. And it ties into the whole thing of kind of getting parents more involved throughout the, the high school, um, getting more parents more involved. I know we have a lot of people who are and, and that's great, but you know, you want to get more, you want to draw more people in and, and get them um, excited and, and informed about what's going on. So.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And I, I think it like to have parent groups where people could come in and, you know, like, feel like comfortable talking to other parents. Like years ago, I ran a, a group called Parents Helping Parents and they would come in and we would talk about college process or, you know, process with, you know, getting kids to do their homework or what have you. And sometimes just sitting down for an hour with other parents and just chatting on best practices and things like that is super helpful too. So.
Yes.
I'd really like to get back to doing that.
Didn't we have something with people new to the district too?
But like more of like a welcome wagon type of thing. Yeah. Um, so I'd really like to work on those type of projects because I think that that would really be helpful too.
Yeah.
Um, just for that engagement. I think that the piece that you were talking about, about Naviance in uh, the middle school.
Yeah.
Is so great because like I was a Naviance maniac, but I have to tell you, like, there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, to have, help parents navigate that, it's, it's a lot to.
And if you start it earlier, because if you're starting that when your kids are juniors, which is when I think a lot of people start it, you know, it is a lot to figure out, right? If you start it, you know, and see what's available in eighth grade, then you're kind of, you know, you're already comfortable with it by the time you really get to have it left you.
Yeah, yeah. So um, so thanks, Jen. Thanks for bringing that forward and uh, I think that we should work on some of those projects that we were talking about. Communication. Uh, I wanted to talk about uh, realistic board goals and I'm, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna kind of shelf this because we have time restraints tonight, but um, I'll send you all again, like I know I keep on sending you uh, copies of the board goals, but I'll send it again. I just, I want to make our board goals very realistic. I, I don't, you know, we have all these catchphrases on these board goals and, and it looks all pretty and shiny and it's like, always pay attention to the shiny object, but are we really doing the work? And I, I just want it to be realistic, attainable and, and something that's very current. And I just feel that our board goals are, I don't know, just uh.
General.
Yeah, I, and, and just like.
Pro forma.
Yeah, just a mesh of, of words out there that, what does that mean? And is that attainable? Can we, you know, how are we doing this? Um, I just.
Measurable.
No, and I just, for me, when I have personal goals, it's measurable that I can check it off the list and be like, oh, I did that and I attained this. And, you know, it's just, I think it's really important as members of, of the Board of Education to be able to say, wow, the end of the school year, we did all this, you know?
And we, we've been working off of the same uh, format for board goals or template for probably three years now.
Yeah.
And it, it is a little wordy, I think. And I think that a lot gets lost in that.
Yeah. A lot of, a lot of school districts publish their board goals. I mean, and school boards might be willing to give us some, whether it's templates or best practices or guidelines or, I mean, I don't know, you know, what your vision is, but there, there are a lot of examples out there that, that we would create our own, of course, but maybe we just kind of spark like, or connect with what you're thinking and how it lays out a little bit better. So.
I just want the accountability piece on our end to really be there and to, for us to be very proud of that. Um, so I, I just think that uh, shake it up a bit and, and make them really real. So that, that's my vision of what I'd like to do in, in the next couple of uh, months is just to get that going and uh, and just shake it up a bit, you know? So uh. I agree with you. That's always what I refer to, best practice, not best pageantry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's get down to the best practice.
Right.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, so um.
Very good, very good.
So that's my thought.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah, I'd like to table this on next work session.
Okay. Ms. Coghlan, midterms.
All righty, midterms. Uh, the midterms were given at the high school and um, the curriculum committee had uh, discussed it. I'm not on the curriculum committee, but the chair had filled me in. Um, I, one of my other, I have a bunch of favorite phrases, but I always love to say there's stories in the data. You just have to look for it. So I'm looking at the midterms from the perspective of um, accountability, student achievement and validity. Accountability in the sense that in the past, we've had at one point a thousand failing grades. Obviously, don't, we do not want to return to that by any means. Uh, looking at it from student achievement, supporting our students, there's data-driven information and validity, like the reasons that were supplied to the um, curriculum committee, the reasons that the exam were administered, which by no means am I questioning. But are, you know, is there an accurate to the extent of the results measured um, for what they were supposed to? So um, keeping this short for this month, just like touching the surface, scratching into the surface, just to let uh, snow, maybe in March, what I, what I'm thinking is um, some quantitative data to be able to make inferences from that to say accountability, student achievement and validity. And using the data because well, uh, working boards use data to make decisions and look back and uh, make sure that the reasons were valid. And, you know, what did we learn from it? How did they help us? Not so much us, our students. How did they help the teachers? How did they help the district? Um, because for example, one of the concerns I had brought forward to the chair prior was I said, you know, juniors have never had midterms due to the pandemic. So since they've never had midterms, what ends up happening is um, you know, this is their big college year. Did it help them? Did it hurt them? You know, um, was there some sort of alternative assessment considered, you know? What was done from that perspective? So just looking at it that and uh, just keeping it short today, like I said, scratching on the surface. So come March, we can start looking for stories in the data.
That's great. Thank you so much. Ms. Renziata, out of school suspension.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Um, I would like to ask the board to take a look at seriously revising um, our suspension policy. It's policy um, fifty-six-ten. It was in our packets. Um, I believe that there are districts out there that have taken a, a more restorative approach to uh, discipline that focuses on keeping students in the academic setting. So it doesn't mean that there would not be consequences for um, behavior in school that is not appropriate or goes against student code of conduct. But it means that we um, realize that the most effective way to, to help students improve behavior is by keeping them in school, not taking them out of school. Uh, I know that this would be a uh, shift in the way that we approach code of conduct violations with students, but I believe that there are examples out there that we can look to in order to do this effectively. There will prob, there will still be a role for times when it is, it is necessary to remove students from the academic setting. That's when there, there is a threat of violence or there is a um, a safety concern for the student or for others um, in the district. And that's all in, in code and, you know, we know that students have to go for outside evaluations in those instances. You know, but the policy as it stands right now, I believe, is antiquated in its approach to student discipline. And I think that we can do better. I also don't believe that we are currently in compliance with our own policy. There's reporting requirements that the principals are supposed to be reporting out um, the suspension records to the superintendent and then the superintendent is supposed to provide those records to the board. That is a practice that even preceding Ms. Devino has not occurred in our district. The board has never received those suspension reports in closed session um, as long as I've been on the board um, for the last five years where they.
We used to get them, it's a hundred years ago, yeah, okay. Was there any names? It was only.
Yes, yeah. Um, that's not something that we're currently doing. Um, and if it's in the policy, I think we should do it.
Yeah.
Um, but I would like to see the number of suspensions go down. Um, if we did revise this policy, the way that I think that we should revise it. The policy also talks about, we need to have a specific um, early detection program in kindergarten through second grade for uh, problematic behaviors in our INRS policy. I don't know if that's currently in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and the policy also talks about academic services needing to, needed to be provided to students when they're removed from the educational setting. But it's really um, a catch-22 because uh, most short-term pensions in the policy are, are five days and academic services don't need to be provided until after five days. Um, so it says, we'll give you services, but we're not going to give them till, to you until day five.
I just wanted to correct. I'm sorry. I think the requirement is for five days to provide services, correct? After five days, right?
That they would be provided within five.
Oh, okay, because we don't generally suspend. That's what you were saying, right? Most of our suspensions are shorter than that, to be honest. Short, yes.
Exactly. So, so if they're shorter than that, yeah, if it's a three-day suspension, we're not going to be providing those academic services. So we're just removing the student from the educational program.
I understand what you're saying.
For two days, three days, four days and then not providing academic services during those days. And I'm sure that there is. Good.
I would say not exceeding ten days by any means.
Ten days for a short-term suspension.
Right, I'm just saying in general, for the whole year.
My goal with this policy is to keep students in school. You know, I, there, there should be consequences for, for violations of code of conduct. This is not saying there should not be consequences, but this is saying that sending a student home to sit at home when their parents are at work, a sixteen-year-old, not being, not being monitored, not being, it's not a, it's a reward. It, it's not a punishment.
I agree. And Justin, where I work, they've implemented um, a student learning center and I'll, I'll tell you guys a little bit about it. It, it's really a proactive approach. The student is disruptive in class, so disruptive, the teacher cannot continue with the lesson. They call down to the office. I'm sending student A down to the student learning center. One of my duties once a week when I'm in that building is to monitor the student center. This child comes in, there is a reflection sheet and then the teacher will sit down with the student, whoever's on duty, and have a discussion with the student. What happened? What could we do better next time? Are you calm enough to return to class? And there are students who will say, no, I am not. I need to stay here and do my work. And they bring their work with them and if they're not able to go to the next class, the work gets sent down. But not only is it utilized for students who are disruptive, any student at any time, so it can use the student learning center. So what happens is if you're doing a makeup test in a science lab and it's noisy, you can go down to the student learning center. There's a teacher there who can work with you on your makeup test. So it's not just about discipline and reflection. It really helps the overall achievement of students. So that's just one idea.
That would be great because one thing that is concerning is the idea of, you know, being unable to remove a student who's disruptive from a classroom because that's a burden on the.
That is definitely.
Teachers and that's not right.
And then what happens is there's a sign-in sheet and that the teachers have to fill out what they discussed with the student. And if the administration thinks that it's still a problem for the administration level, then the administration will talk to that student. It's about a fifty-fifty. Sometimes it never even reaches administration, that the student is able to work out with the teacher and then conference with their own teacher afterwards. So it really alleviates some of the administrative issues as well as like this, there are windows, students coming down all day to the office for sometimes minor infractions, really.
Right.
So just something to think about.
I think there's a lot of options and models that we can look to for best practices on this. And I don't want to um, talk about this without saying that I know that it's a very three-dimensional topic and there are victims when there are code of conduct violations. And one of the um, the benefits to an out-of-school suspension can be that you're removing the aggressor from a situation where there might have been a victim um, dynamic. And that doesn't mean that there may not be other repercussions or consequences. And that doesn't mean that there may not be other repercussions or consequences in school that remove the aggressor from the the victim. So that victim still feels safe going to school every day because that making sure that a student that is a victim in that situation. You know, we need to make sure that they can go to school and feel safe as well. I don't want anybody to misinterpret what I'm saying as there shouldn't be consequences.
Right.
Because there should be consequences, but we can do better. We can, we can keep our students in school and still make sure that lessons are learned and that that discipline is enforced.
So why don't we?
Do you have in-school suspension?
Yeah.
We do. Okay.
In-school suspension.
Of other stuff, so.
Now it is.
Why don't we start with creating the suspension report, right? So that I can see the numbers. Maybe surprised, right? I'm not saying we don't suspend at all. We do. But we don't typically suspend for five or seven or nine days. I mean, it's usually a one or a two day. Sometimes it's a three or four. We do use progressive discipline, which means that things will usually start at like an after-school detention or an extended detention and then in school and then eventually out of school. But there are other restorative practices that are being used. In fact, the middle school actually is getting ready to launch a whole school professional development on our our professional development day in March, which I think is great because the teachers and the administration got together and talked about, you know, we have a lot of gaps in social development now due to COVID. Where if you're a middle school teacher and you've always taught middle school, students are coming in acting or behaving like fourth or fifth graders because of the gap in the social challenges that we had during COVID, right? There wasn't the stimulation that or the connection that that kids had to accountability or expectations in a school setting. So other things like the reflection sheet that you mentioned, I mean, we do a lot of reflection sheets, reflective writings. There's a lot of counselor interventions along the way with behaviors. So I guess I don't, I don't want with the examination of policy, I don't want the people at the table or the people at home to think that our teachers, our administrators, our counselors are not intervening prior, right?
I believe you that the the discipline is progressive in that it doesn't start with the suspension.
Right.
But I I also believe that consequences should be directly tied to a behavior. And and there's really not a strong correlation between an inappropriate behavior in school, a code of conduct violation, and sitting at home for two days, sitting at home.
I get that. Yeah.
That's not teaching a lesson.
Right.
And it's it's just not effective. It's a it's an antiquated model for discipline.
Yeah, the disruption is usually is is quite a challenge, like you indicated, right? I mean, if, you know, if a if a child is so disruptive, it can be quite difficult to teach.
I believe that. And and I'm not suggesting that students stay in the class for those three days.
Right, right.
The in-school suspension model may be.
They don't, right? They may go to, they may go to in-school. They may not. Our in-school is not what your in-school is. So I appreciate the conversation. You know, but we have the, you know, we're we're required to provide learning opportunities for every child, right? So if somebody's disruptive, we do unfortunately, sometimes a child has to be removed and they would go into an in-school or another setting so that the other kids can learn.
So my question for the board is, is there support for moving the policy in this direction? And if there is, I'd like to ask that there be an ad hoc committee formed that incorporates individuals from the high school who work with the students every day to work with board members in making proposed revisions to the policy.
Okay, you want to go around and just do a straw poll?
I would support looking at that, definitely.
Yeah.
I would too, definitely.
Right, Martin?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I'll do, like special services, like when you refer to the IRNS, which is intervention referral services. In special services, there's another local school district in New Jersey has a really good manual for the NJTSS, which is New Jersey Tiered System of Supports, which is within that umbrella. And they have a whole behavioral component. So I'll share that with you. So when you meet with your ad hoc, you know, just something for everybody to refer to because I sent it out in special services and apply here too.
Great, I'm awake.
No.
Pushing you, like, wait.
This 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 policy was adopted in fourteen and revised in seventeen. You were on the board at the time?
Yes, I was my first year on the board. Well, it depends on when in the year, right?
I my, I agree.
I joined in eighteen.
I remember seeing all kinds of suspensions. I remember being on hearings to lengthen suspension beyond ten days.
Yes, and my previous.
January of eighteen, because twenty-twenty-two is my fifth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think, whatever should be on as more like advisory, but we're not the experts on the discipline. And I I understand your opinion about these. I have some research that you're.
I think that there is, I believe that there is a large body of research on restorative practices being a more effective model for discipline. And I understand that we are not experts on it. That's why I would like experts to be on the committee. But the board sets the district policy. So I think that the board, the vision for the board for the district is a direction the policy.
And I have not read this policy yet, so.
Well, and it would be explore, like we're talking about.
Yeah, by by forming an ad hoc, that way you're just, you're just going to the next level.
Yeah, to the next level. And with the end goal of proposing revisions to the board.
Okay, so you would be chair of ad hoc, right?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Who would like to join Justin?
I'll do it with you, Justin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Add one more thing to my plate. Do you, do you want?
It really doesn't matter. Whoever's interested. You don't need to have four if there's not four.
Okay.
Some stuff you do it.
Okay.
Anybody else? Oh, race gun.
Why not? I'll join.
John said he'll do it. Yay.
I'll reach out to.
Justin, Chen, John, and Adina.
Great. And I'll reach out to Ms. Davino to talk about who she would like to invite from the faculty and staff.
Great.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
Um, you had said earlier in the meeting that we have a hard stop at nine o'clock.
Oh, we do.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? Can we, because we're going to have to come back because we're not going to get done with this by nine o'clock. Can we move to public participation? There are some children in the audience also. And so that way we can get done with public participation.
Yeah, absolutely.
The public can go home if they want to, so that we can go do our thing and then come back and.
But they're welcome to stay.
Because it's compelling, compelling.
Real interesting stuff. I use.
We have a motion to move public participation.
You, you can.
You can just do it.
You can just do it.
You can just do it.
I just, I'm just trying to be. Okay.
Okay.
So we have entered public participation. Members of the audience can come up to the podium, state your name and section of town that you're from, and you will have five minutes.
Section of town. And this is my daughter, Makayla. She's in fourth grade in here at Lounsbury, and she wanted to come. She just wanted to say something very short, and she made a poster too.
Oh, okay.
I saw the posters, saw the poster, yeah.
Excellent.
Anyway, she was talking about the mask being lifted as of March seventh, is what she wanted to say.
I think it's about time we are done with masks in Vernon. It's a problem for me because I am tired of wearing it for seven hours again. I don't want to wear these forever at school.
That's all she's.
Okay, can we see your sign?
Very well said.
That was very brave of you.
Oh, my gosh, she's waiting on whether to watch online. And then she's like, come on, let's just go.
It's great to be live. Thank you, Teresa.
Buy some ice cream on the way home. Put it on the spot.
Let's see. Let's see it. Let's see it.
I have this one that says, let's cancel those masks. Even do a person right here.
Oh, that's amazing.
And then this one says, no masks.
Fantastic. Stand up for what you believe in. You should really be proud of yourself. Congratulations.
She wanted to start a rally if they weren't lifting. So just. Start that, and I don't know.
Rally anyway. That'd be fun.
Have a celebration.
Anybody else?
I don't know how you follow that up.
It's a tough act to follow, so.
Very proud of her. She's, she's a great kid.
She's amazing.
Hi, my name is Dana Devery. I am from the Plazey County section of Vernon. I have three children in our schools, ages eleven, nine, and five, and I'm here for them. As a parent, I have seen the effects of extended masking on children. My preschooler speech, our his speech concern has not improved at all since he has started school. He's struggling now just to say his words louder because he has to speak it with a mask on. It's no fault of his teacher. She's incredible. I absolutely love, love her. He just needs to see someone's mouth moving to understand how to form proper sounds. He doesn't even really know what his friends look like outside of school. We were at his brother's basketball game and he recognized a friend from school. He told me he recognized him because he always wears that Batman mask. I think it's unacceptable. I wish he could see the look on his face every morning as he shined to get one last kiss in on the drop-off line before I put a mask over the majority of his face and send him to school while I walk away from him without a mask on. My fourth grader came home the other day with a picture that her friend drew of her. It was the top of her face, her eyes and a mask. It didn't resemble her at all. But this is how they've all seen each other for the last three years. Our children are unrecognizable. Any of you who have children should be heartbroken over this. I don't want my my four-year-old's first memory or five-year-old's first memory to be what mask his friend wore. I'm not, everyone up here said before, and you've said it many times, that you guys are not public health officials. And when our governor said that March seventh, he's going to lift the mask mandate, he did not say except preschoolers. They are not lesser people. They have the same rights. They're just smaller people. It doesn't matter when the vaccine is approved for them. He won't be vaccinated. I'm not vaccinating my children. So five weeks post-vaccine, there's no science to that. That's just a random number that was made up. So I I don't agree with that at all. I'm devastated about the idea of two of my children not having a mask on and sending my five-year-old into school with a mask still. Our kids have incredible teachers here. I am so grateful for everything they have done. We have great staff. We have great custodians. We have everything. I see this. I'm on the SCA in the schools. I'm at the schools helping. I mean, I, we are extremely, extremely lucky, and I've seen how much work everybody has put into this, and I'm grateful that everybody has tried to keep our kids safe while everything was unknown. But now we know that it's time to go back to normal for all of the children, vaccinated, not vaccinated, no matter what age they are. It's time for them to go back to normal. And I have one last thing for you. You've probably heard the poem, "All I Need to Know in Life I Learned in Kindergarten." There's a new version that a New Jersey teacher in spite was inspired to adapt based on her own experiences. It's all I really need to know I learned in COVID kindergarten. Share nothing, play alone. Don't touch people. Put things in the basket so they can be disinfected when you're done with them. Clean up your individual table with a child-safe disinfectant wipe. Don't wear masks that aren't yours. Say something as many times as it takes until someone can hear you. Wash your hands for twenty seconds every twenty minutes. Flush and wait for someone to disinfect the bathroom before your friends can use it. Cookies and milk are not allowed in school. Live a solitary life. Zoom, FaceTime, draw and paint, sing, dance and play, but do it alone in your own house and not with a friend. Take your temperature every morning. When you go out into the world, watch out for germs. Don't hold hands and stay six feet apart. Be aware of personal space. Remember the little virus is in the air around us. The spikes go out and the symptoms show up, and nobody really knows how or why. But we're all afraid of it. Governments and neighbors and teachers and even our friends, they're afraid, and so are we. And then remember the Google meets and the seesaw assignments and the biggest word of all, coronavirus. Everything you never thought you'd ever need to know is in there somewhere. The executive orders and fear and exorcismization, biology and politics and vision and insane living. Take any of those items, extrapolate it into sophisticated adult terms and apply it to your family life or your work or your government or your world, and it holds on so long that it feels like we won't be normal again. Think of what a better world it would be if all of us, the whole world, took down their masks, had cookies and milk during snack time at school, and then played with their friends on the playground. Or if all the governments had a basic policy to let families choose what's best for them and to take responsibility for their actions. And it's still true, no matter how often you're told otherwise. When you go out into the world, it's best to hold hands, stick together and fight for your children. For our children and for your students, your colleagues, take back your responsibility, take a stand and unmask our children now regardless of their age or vaccination status.
Adina, and thank you for your time on the SCA. That's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick comment. Everybody's being, nobody has masks. It doesn't, it doesn't matter the.
Yeah, I mean, and I apologize. I don't know who, I don't know how many people were here when I started the discussion about masks. I mean, I'm going to put something out to the district tomorrow. We are going to be following the governor's removal of masks on March seventh. Unfortunately, transportation still requires us to wear masks for now, but we're hoping that that's lifted by the seventh. Our pre-K students, some of them don't wear masks now because they can't. You know, so, but it is for everybody. It is K-12, everyone. You know, I am still waiting on some guidance from the Department of Health, unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, but I I'm hoping that we are moving gradually back to normal. So just for some clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Anissa Hess. I'm at Cedar Ridge. I just have one thing for you guys to think when you think of the suspensions in school. You're sending healthy children for close contacts home for five, ten, fourteen, wherever we're at in the whole spiel of this whole thing. And you're not going to send a child who blatantly disrespected rules sit in front of them. Sit on that while we reassess suspending a child with no regard or respect for rules. And you're sending a straight-A student home for sitting too close to her friend at lunch.
Any else? No? No, I will. I just, anybody else in the audience? Because I'm going to go to Zoom after. Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody in the audience. Matt?
Martin.
Hi, Martin. Can you hear me?
It's muted. Martin, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. All right, two things going back memory lane, but come relevant to today's meeting. Number one, one of the first things Dr. Fari did, I think it was two thousand, two thousand and three, was having joint meetings. We had two joint meetings with the town. And it was awful. And the reason it was awful is because it was very poorly organized. Nobody knew when they were talking, to whom they were talking in public participation. It was basically a town meeting followed by a board of ed meeting. The town meeting people left after one hour. Some of the B O E members came an hour late. People missed, were making comments in the first section, which was dedicated to the town, and the town said, why are you talking to us about building a new school? And then later on, people were making comments, I don't know what the town issue back then was, but like you want to hear at the end with no town people there about the pump track. So I suggest strongly you organize this much, much better and you really talk to the, to the town people, to the councilman and everything, how they want to run it. And you publish the rules and you say something at the very least, this public participation is for town issues only. This is for school issues only, or you can make a joint meeting. You can now talk about town and school issues, et cetera. And I would expect or hope that the council, the town council and the B O E talk to each other. Back then, one of the big issues was that the town council was excusing the school to drive up the taxes, but that wasn't talked about when there was a joint meeting. So there should be something like this for a joint meeting. The second one is what Justin and I suggested, in-school suspension versus out-of-school suspension. I had personal experience with this in another millennium when my son was young. And it worked very well. I made a lot of research and I initially went to the head of special ads to the Mr. Masarino back then, so long ago. And then he said, I can't do nothing. It's it's B O E matter to make the policies. And then I went to the B O E. And I couldn't find in this short period of time, all the research I did back then, it's that's something new. But all I did this was type into Google, out-of-school versus in-school suspension, and there's a lot of a lot of data on that. And in-school suspension, the science works much better. So that's what I wanted to say. And actually, that was one of the. And actually, that was one of the things that got me started to go regularly to BOE meetings. So I guess we come full circle. So I hope you're going to go for in-school suspensions. I don't want, uh, the kids, my son needed to be removed from the class back then. He even raised his hand and said to the teacher, I can't hack it no more, send me to the principal so he can send me home. Teacher told him to sit down, he cleared his desk, teacher yelled at him. He then said, send me to the principal so he can send me home. So then he threw his desk into the corner, the teacher sent him to the prin-, principal. Then once he threw his through the class window, the teacher sought to send him to the principal, the principal sent him home, and he said to the teacher, why did you make me throw the desk? I just couldn't handle it no more. Okay, he was autistic, he still is. So there is, and then in-school suspension, taking him out of the class did a lot of good for him. Okay, and it worked. So, and it, there's a lot of science, so please Google it and please do wherever you can do in-school suspension, uh, you do in-school suspension. The only time out-of-school suspension in the, according to the science, is suggested if a child behaves in a manner that is even in in-school suspension unmanageable. Okay? So I don't know how much has changed in the past twenty years, but I hope you find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, and thank you for sharing your personal story. That means a lot to us, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for the suggestions on the meeting. I took some notes on it and hopefully we can design those things out.
Okay, do we have anybody else on Zoom? Okay, so we're going to close public participation. And we are going to have to go into our closed session, which is. You know. Recommended that the board enter into closed session for purposes of discussing personnel matters. Oh, action will be taken when we come out. Can I have a motion?
So moved, O'Donnell, checking.
O'Donnell first and Mr. Nunziata second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in close. John seconded already. Oh, John?
First.
Yeah.
Joe, thank you, Joe.
Okay, so number two. Policies regu-, regulations and supporting documents, those are supporting documents we had for our, um, discussion topic. You have them all in your packet? And then you have any questions on that?
Yep.
Okay, moving on.
I just would recommend that everybody get a chance to read them.
Yeah.
Yes.
And comment on them if you, if you have.
Letter H is a review of the public meeting agenda. Did everybody take a look at the agenda?
Yes.
Changes, questions? Okay. Uh, letter I?
Alright, so we, uh, thanks. Uh, harassment, intimidation, bullying, random drug testing and school safety reports. Obviously, we went over that in executive, we take action next week, right? When we're together. Um, there's a draft of the twenty-two, twenty-three school district calendar. Um, obviously, it's not on for tonight for approval, that would be on for next week. We did share that with the members of partnership today. If I hear anything back and have any feedback and need to make adjustments, I'll get back to you. Policy eighty-six hundred, um, this is a mandated policy. There was a recent change, I just want to bring it to your attention so that you know. Um, prior to the change, um, school districts could transport children to two different addresses. So for example, if there's a split family, a divorce, separation, et cetera, um, we could transport to mom on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, dad on Tuesday, Thursday, but, you know, whatever it may have you. We currently transport about forty-six students at total in the district to two different, um, locations. There is a policy change that we no longer have to do that. Um, I just want some guidance from the board if you'd like us to keep that practice or if you would like to, um, transport just to one address, which would be the primary custodial parent.
Is there anything taxing about doing it?
No, I don't believe so. There's, there's no reason, but there's a policy change at the, at the regulation level, right? So when it comes to us and we have a choice.
Right. I'm just saying, you know, would it help us in some way? Because I don't see any reason to take that.
Financially, it's a one whole school bus, right? So could we save on one route? Perhaps, um, that's, that would be the impact. But there's a cost, right? There's the financial impact, but then there's convenience for our families.
And it also depends where the students are.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I think that we have, we should be, we want students to come to school. We should not make it hard for.
Then, in that regard, then you won't see this on for like first reading or just so that you know. Okay?
Okay.
And then the other ones are previews, as we've discussed, we decided, uh, the work session, we'd have previews of policies, and then you won't see them till first reading for next time. As a reminder, the M's are mandates, um, which means that you don't usually see any, um, options. They're just, um, directly, uh, taken from the language of past or renewed, uh, legislation.
But you have an M next to the student transportation.
Yeah, well, that was one that just came with a change, but we don't have, we don't have to, I'm sorry.
But you said M stands for mandated.
It is a mandated policy.
Oh, the policy is mandated.
Right, the policy is mandated, right.
But the language we choose.
If we wanted to, right. Um, shall I move on to recommendations? Please, okay. Uh, bottom of page three, it is recommended the board approve the following faculty staff resignations, returnments, terminations, et cetera.
We do have an addition.
Yep, I do have that. So let me, uh, read into the record, it is inclusive of the table, and I do have one addendum, an additional leave, and I'll make sure that you get these notes. Okay, thank you. This is leave for employee number four-nine-eight-zero for a medical leave effective May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two until June twenty-seventh, twenty-two. Um, as noted, that's the, uh, table that goes on to the top of page five.
Can I have a motion for recommendations? One.
So moved.
For Nunziata.
Second, O'Donnell.
Second, O'Donnell. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes, Mrs. Conklin?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lutner?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pellet?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Mr. Nunziata?
Yes.
Thank you. Number two, it is recommended that the board approve the following ELL English Language Learners Plan from July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Purpose is to ensure appropriate services for ELLs.
I can.
Wow, oh my gosh. Questions or comments?
Yeah, did I miss it? I didn't, I couldn't find the, uh, plan.
Uh, I don't know if it's attached, it does not say attachment, so it's possible that it was not attached. I can provide it for the board, it is required that we have an English Language Learners Plan.
All right, I'm just gonna abstain then since I didn't read it.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Nuthler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pellet?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Nunziata?
Yes.
Mrs. Conklin?
Uh, I've seen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, letter J?
Yes, we have the enrollment report as of now. We have the New Jersey School Boards Association Virtual Spring Symposium. If anybody's interested, please contact my office.
Okay, thank you. Uh, letter K, public.
Thank you, just interrupt for a second, going back, please, to number two there. Um, that three-year plan be from July first, twenty-twenty-two?
Where are you going?
Is that a typo?